That's the gavel. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Once again, it's a joint meeting of the School Committee and Task Force. What we'll do is I will turn this over to the Chair, Acting Chair of the Task Force. Presentation will be made. Remember that it's kind of a two-day thing. On May 10th, we'll have a follow-up so that you can digest some of the information that you get today. And after the Task Force is over with its presentation, then the School Committee will continue with its own meeting back in the Administration Building. So, right now, I will turn... You guys ready? All right, now I'll turn this over. Thank you. Dave?
Welcome tonight. It's glad to see... It's very high to see so many people in the room. What's going to happen tonight is there's going to be a presentation by the Collins Center. It's going to consist of three parts. And the various presenters will be doing their part. At the end of each section, there'll be time for some questions from the audience. So I would appreciate it if you hold your questions until the end of each session. This is just a preliminary vetting, basically, of the data and the observations that the Collins Center has made so far. This is just a preliminary thing, and we're not looking at any decisions right now. We're looking at options and hopefully using the data and the observations that Collins Center has brought to us to help inform our decisions. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Lamboy from the Collins Center.
Thank you. I think I'll stand over here, so out of the screen. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. My name is Monica Lamboy. I'm a Senior Associate at the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. I'm here with my colleagues of Bill Lupini and Ray Shortliff. We actually have a team of six working on this project, and they weren't all able to make it, but they have absolutely contributed to the project and to the process. Just to understand the audience, one question. By show of hands, how many people have been to at least one of the meetings that we have facilitated on this? Either the community conversation or the presentation of the trends? If you've gone to one. Excellent. Keep your hands up if you've been to both sets, the community conversation and the trend report. Wow, that's really remarkable. So, that shows a lot of commitment in the community to come out here. Some of the information we're going to talk about tonight is repetitive, because I want to make sure that we build as we go along, but we've also added new information for your purposes. And as was said, this is, in some ways, a first step. Tonight is not an end for anything. It's not an end for the conversation. It's not an end for making a decision. I hope people can be here with your listening ears on, because we want to make sure there's ample opportunity throughout this process for people to ask questions and to have a dialogue with each other. So, the way we're structuring it so that you'll hear part of the presentation first is hopefully to have you be able to sort of absorb this information. If you want to take notes, I put some index cards on the front table. Feel free to go grab them if you don't have any paper to take notes. So, what we want to do today is tell you a little bit about the Center and the project team. So, again, we're a large team of academics. I'm a city planner by background, and I've done lots of organizational development. Bill and Ray both have many years of experience in the public school districts in Massachusetts and elsewhere to contribute. Our first third is going to be talking about the challenges that are facing the regional school district and allow you for questions and answers. Then we're going to talk about a series of best practice recommendations. These are the kinds of recommendations we would make in any school district, whether they had enrollment challenges or not. It's just good ways to do businesses and to control costs. And then we're going to talk about a series of school site alternatives. The written report has a lot of detail on each and every alternative that we looked at. That will be available to you online tomorrow. Raise your hand if you can hear me. For tonight, because we have time constraints, we're going to sort of only really cover three in a high level of detail, but please know, there's a tremendous amount of detail in the report about each and every option. Fundamentally, the question that we are all here to answer is how do we provide the schools with a solid foundation on which they can provide a quality education to the students? As we know, in a situation where there is budget uncertainty, when we don't know what positions will be in the budget next year, when you are here, because we don't even know what the facilities are in the long term. That causes a lot of anxiety for parents, for the principals, for the teachers that are trying to do their best to educate your students. So, how do we come out of this process at the end with a solid foundation that's going to take Quavon Regional School District into the future in a really good place? So, it's always good to start with ground rules, particularly in situations when we're talking about things that are complex and emotional. And I wanted to ask people in the room, what are some of the ground rules about how we can operate together tonight and have this information sharing and conversation for tonight? So, who have some ground rules that we could use? Actually, Ray, could you write down for us? What are some good ground rules to use tonight and how we're going to treat each other in this room? Be respectful. Be respectful of each other. Listen. You've been to meetings like this before. Wait your turn. Raise your hand? Wait your turn? What are the ground rules? Honesty. Thank you. That's a really good one. What other ground rules could we come up with for tonight? One of the ones we used in the World Cafe was inquiry, to ask questions, to get information, to don't close your mind to the new information. So, come with your ears able to listen and to hear. Other kinds of ground rules. What I'd like to offer is that, given that everybody in this room is here, on their own personal time for the most part, it's because you care, right? Everybody here cares about their children. Everybody here cares about their community. You can't, in a way, out-passion each other, because you're all equally passionate about the topic. So, we have to, in some ways, let those passions be there, because we feel them, but also to try to look at this with our brains, with our intellectual part, to say, what is the solution? What's the path forward? Because we're not going to be able to outshout each other, because everybody's coming here because you really do care about this situation and this topic. Any other ground rules? With that, you can always throw some out later. Work together? That's a good one for this whole exercise, not just tonight, but as we go forward, work together. Anything else? Okay. Oh, remember, it's about students. I didn't plant him. He came up with that on his own. We will do that. We'll remember it's about students. So, when we wanted challenges... So, you are not alone. The towns that make up the Quavon School District, the district itself, are not alone in having challenges, in meeting their financial needs, in dealing with changes in school enrollment. There's a very substantial change in population across the U.S. There was a large shift after World War II, when people left the cities and moved out to beautiful areas such as this. In a lot of ways, the trend has moved back into the cities. In addition, overall, we are aging. The United States is getting older. We have fewer children, on average, than we did in the past. Our household sizes are smaller, and there are just fewer children compared to the baby boom years and the years right after that. Many Massachusetts districts are facing enrollment declines. And it's so persuasive, it's hard to even figure out. It's a little bit like sand, right? You're trying to solve your problem, but the ones, the people next to you, are trying to solve the same problem as well throughout the area. And increased costs are a major factor. Budgets always go up with healthcare, with salaries and such, but there are other pressures, and we'll talk about them, that are also affecting the budget. But we do want to look specifically at the fact pattern here, what's happening uniquely in this area. Population trends. So, this is a visual that shows, back from 1850 to 1980, how the population in the five towns has changed, and then for the area as a whole. So, there was, pretty much until World War II, the area had about a level population. But after World War II, again, when people were leaving the cities, families found this to be a really tremendously wonderful place to live. We saw housing development. We saw more children. We saw the regional school district created in 1965 to consolidate the high schools. And then in 1985, New Braintree was added to the four and all the elementary schools. And at that time, the student population was growing and growing. There has been a change. There was an inflection point, and in about 2000, when the red line on this graphic is youth of school age, zero to 19. So, you can see, it's rising from before to 1980, up until 2000. And then there was an inflection in 2005, 2006, where the student population, where the youth population in the area started to decline. That was made even more rapid with the Great Recession in 2007, where some families had to leave the areas because of employment issues, where some of the businesses were closed because of the financial challenges. So, it's, in some ways, has been even more rapid decline since 2007. This is just a graphic, and you'll get this in your handout, looking at the age of, by age, throughout the five towns. I want to call your attention to the far-right column, where if you look at... These are all five-year increments. You look at 10 to 14, and you look at 15 to 19, we have about 1,300 residents in that age group. But look who's immediately following them, our five-to-nine-year-olds, 769. So, there's about 600 fewer five-to-nine-year-olds. And when you go down to under five, there's another dip there. So, we're starting to see, even now, some of the projections that are for the future, which is that there will be fewer and fewer young people in the area. This is a projection that was done by UMass Amherst, the Donohue Institute. They did population projections for all cities and towns in Massachusetts. Again, the red line is the youth of school age. So, they are showing a continued decline in younger people, although 65-plus is really exciting to be here. They are definitely moving in substantial drops. And the quality of life is totally understandable. So, what does this mean for the district's enrollment? What's happening with performance?
Good evening. My name is Bill Lupini. I'm an associate with the Collins Center, and I also serve right now as Superintendent of the Essex North Shore Vocational School District, after being Superintendent in Beverly and Brookline for a number of years. So, what I want to do, and again, if you were here with us the first time we were in this room, you saw some of these data before, but we'll go through them again. So, your enrollment by grade has moved in the patterns that we saw in terms of the students who are available in those age ranges. You've seen a decrease in enrollment, and the projections are that that enrollment will continue to decrease. In terms of total school attending residents, we've seen that decline by 23%, but we looked within that in terms of what's happening in your district public schools, because more and more, all of our public schools are in competition with lots of other entities that are there. Charter schools, vocational schools, and out-of-district public schools through school choice, all these programs that have come along and are putting districts... I guess I would say accentuating the problem that Monica talked about earlier, right? We're seeing declining enrollments in many districts in Central and Western Massachusetts, and more and more of those districts are entering into school choice. More and more of those districts are experiencing charter schools. More and more of those districts are seeing their enrollments at vocational schools increase. And you're seeing many of those same kinds of things here, in terms of vocational school enrollments increasing, charter schools beginning to take a hold here, and then school choice, which I'll show you here. This was always a district that was a big winner, if you will, if you'll accept that term, in terms of the school choice numbers across this region. Some of that was because many other districts didn't get into school choice early on. Now, most districts have figured it out and created their own kinds of competitive ways of looking for school choice students. But in 2008, you really saw a high-water mark in terms of being a receiving district. And even in terms of being a receiving district, while your own numbers of school choice students who are leaving has ticked up, you've also declined in terms of the number of students from other districts that are entering this district, that are choosing school choice. So, that gap between what you receive financially from those districts in school choice has narrowed. We showed this slide the last time, and it's actually a slide that we had to go back and modify. The last time that we were here, we said, one of the pieces of good news here is that you were at numbers in terms of special education that were below state averages. That still is true. It still shows that. And we said, but you've ticked up to the point where, right now, you are near, or just slightly, I think it was above, those statewide averages. We actually had to go back and look at those numbers again, because the numbers we were looking at from the Department of Ed didn't include your out-of-district placements. And so, the truth of the matter is that today, while the state average is around 17.4% of district populations throughout the Commonwealth, you're at 20%, 20.3%, I believe it is, overall, which is a good three percentage points above. And I need to say, and we'll talk about it in terms of some of the recommendations, really mirrors some of what we're seeing in districts that are like yours in Central and Western Mass, that are experiencing declining enrollments, that have not been winners in terms of what the state budget has given them, right? Have begun to see competition in terms of school choice, charter schools. So, in addition to declining enrollments, you're seeing more students leave in those ways. They've had to cut budgets, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in a little bit. They've had to reduce budgets, and some of those decisions of reducing budgets have actually accentuated the numbers of kids on IEPs. So, we've worked with districts that are in the 27%, 28% range. You're not there. But five years ago, we would have been talking to them about their 20%. So, you're on the path, is the story here. And of course, in terms of your MCAT scores, and what we haven't done here is we haven't broken these out by subgroup, right? We'd actually be able to tell an even more interesting story if we did that. But even in terms of the overall, what you've seen as compared to state numbers is a decline in the English Language Arts scores over this time. You've seen a fairly, somewhat of a growth and then decline. So, you're a little all over the place in terms of math, and then this decline in science scores. So, you know, right at-ish, state numbers are slightly below in a lot of cases. So, Monica now is going to talk about what we've seen so far in terms of district budget and facilities.
I'm going to start with school facilities, and we talked about this at our last meeting. We have a few more nuances on some of this. This just gives you an overview of the seven, well, the six school buildings, with the middle high school being the one we are in, their age, their square footage, grades, the numbers of classrooms. On the far right are two important columns. The enrollment in October 1st, 2009, that's the sort of official snapshot date the state uses for much of its data, compared to 2016. So, seven years later, we have that 800 fewer students that you can see, and it's distributed into most of the buildings, most of the grade sizes have had declines. But more for the point of what we're looking at today, the question at hand is, are the facilities fully utilized, overutilized, or underutilized? And what this graphic does is looks to the state MSBA, which is the entity that funds schools, school construction projects. They use two measures to determine how much funding they're going to be putting into a project. One is a measure of square footage per student, and another is classrooms to student ratio. What we do here is look at the 2016 enrollment, apply the MSBA measure, and then the column that is third from the right is the square footage the MSBA would fund in its formula. That doesn't mean that's the right square footage for you. Communities can make decisions. They can put additional monies into their school facilities, but we're just using this sort of as a measure to compare to what the state would fund. That shows that there is 71,000 square feet of space above what the MSBA would say is what they would be willing to commit to. That is just about the size of the entire Wubbles Lane School in Berry. And I will say, here forward in the presentation, we're not going to use square footage, we're going to move to classrooms, because some of my numbers suggest that the square footages on this table are actually low, which means the problem could be even a little bit more substantial. I'm trying to hunt that down with the MSBA, but what we can say is, at a minimum, at a minimum, we have 71,000 more square feet than the student body would warrant. And you can see that's 116% there. Now, let's look at classrooms. The MSBA, when they're looking at a facility, looks to have a classroom-to-student ratio of 23 students per classroom. That doesn't mean that's the class size. That's a policy question for the various schools, but they're saying, as a funding entity, we will fund up to this ratio of 23 students per class. In this measure, it says that the school district as a whole needs 98 classrooms, but you have 192. So, we're almost two times the number of classrooms that the MSBA would fund if we were trying to build new schools for the student body that we have here today. This will... You'll see this when we get to the alternatives about consolidation, you'll see how this plays out. Moving into the financial area. We know it's been a series of really difficult years for the towns in adopting the budgets. We have not been able to reach agreement on school budgets for four out of the past five years, or five out of the past six. And there's a reason for that. So, if you look at the blue line, that is the state funding that has come through Chapter 70. It does not include transportation or capital. And you can see here, from 2010 to 2017, the actual dollars that the state has provided have gone down. The costs haven't gone down, but the dollars that you have from the state have gone down. In turn, the town contribution has gone up from $10,600,000 in 2010 to $13.5 million in 2017. Those are big dollar amounts for communities of the size that we're talking about, the five towns here. This is a substantial increase in town-level funding. And I will say, even with the declines in state funding, the state has largely held harmless those communities that have had declines in enrollment. So, basically, they're not... The state formula is based on the number of students. They haven't deducted from Quavon what they could have in terms of the state contribution because of your decline in enrollment. They've held you harmless. They've done this to districts across the state. But what I would say, it doesn't mean that the state... It means that the state funding is not likely to increase at a minimum until you get back to the number that they're holding you harmless to. So, there would need to be a substantial increase in student body for the state to be coming forward with large numbers of dollars. So, they're not going to come riding in on a horse and try, at least not that we know right now, to solve the problem for you or the other districts that are similarly situated. In looking at, you know, where does the budget here comport with other districts of a similar size? The red box there is the spending per pupil for Quavon, and the graphic is kind of a scattered graphic that shows for different sizes. So, really small districts end up spending a lot of money per student, it's just by the nature. But what we can see is you're about in the middle, you know, of the other districts in the 2,000 to 2,500 range. And you're actually slightly under the state average, which is $14,440. You're just short of $14,000. This is another detail, but what I do want to point out here is, if you see three columns for Quavon, three for the state, the number of students that are in district, the numbers of students that are out of district, meaning they are placed, they are your students, but they are going to school in facilities that are not your buildings. And then we have all pupils. If you look at the in-district costs, it's $13,330 in 2015, the 2015 fiscal year. Your out-of-district figure here is $23,000 for out-of-district students. And that means that the cost for the students that are going to other programs that you cannot or are not accommodating in here is higher than the in-district. It's actually driving the average up for the overall district. Okay, sorry. In this one, we wanted to look at the dollars at the school sites. We took your 2015, 16, 17 budgets and looked at the monies that were applied to the different schools versus district-wide, and compared that to the student body, to see if there was, you know, a relative equity across the different schools. Was the district investing about the same amounts of money in the students in the various different schools? There's not a dramatic difference between the different schools, but there is one point I want to make here. If you look at the row for New Braintree and the row for Oakham, which are the two, have the two smallest enrollments, and you carry it out all the way over to the right, you'll see that the dollars per student at New Braintree is just under $12,000, $11,954. And the dollars per student at Oakham are $10,412. Is it Oakham or Oakham? Oakham? Okay, okay. I asked for a ticket to Hayer Hill on the commuter rail, and my husband was like, "Oh, I don't even know her." So, I'm sorry. So, there is some disparity, that there are higher numbers of dollars being spent per pupil in the very smallest schools, which is perhaps not surprising, since there is a facility that's being funded, there have to be personnel in the building, and the class sizes tend to be very small. A more telling table is a deeper look at the special education costs over the same period of time. The very top row are special education dollars spent in the school buildings in one of the seven different schools. What we can see there is the special education spending has increased about 11.2% over three fiscal years. That's a pretty reasonable increase for cost of living and just the cost of utilities, et cetera. Where we see a significant change is in the out-of-district spending for special education, where the dollar increase in the last three years has been a million and a half increase, which is a 53% rise in the amount of spending for students that are out of district. Again, these are students that are your residents, they're our kids, but the services that they need are not being provided within the school facilities here in Quavon. And that is what's really driving the increase in the special education costs are the out-of-district, which ties back to that per-pupil out-of-district number that we saw earlier. And we'll have some recommendations about that. We also, with the Equity Eye, looked at the numbers of classrooms and the numbers of students per class, on average, in the various schools. Where one of our principles is to try to get at least three classes per grade per school. So, we can see a lot of twos here. Most of the schools, elementary schools, have two, sometimes occasionally one classroom. And the size of the numbers of students, on average, has a pretty substantial variation. We have two first-grade classes in New Braintree that average 12 students each, compared to the ones in Hubbardston, which are 19.5. Maybe that .5 kid might be easier to deal with than a whole child. And we have, you know, 25 students in the Hubbardston third grade compared to 17 in the Hardwick third grade. This is in part because of the way the vision agreement is written. It says that... It says that students shall go to school in the school, the building that is in their town. And they have to ask for special exceptions to be able to go to other schools, and there's a series of exceptions that are there. So for towns that have few children, there are fewer children in that classroom, and the district doesn't have the ability to equalize, to say, you know, equity is one of our principles, we want to make sure the class sizes are relatively equal. They do not have an authority under the agreement. There's only very specific situations when a student could be transferred from one to the other. So that's why you have a various differences. Okay. So this is sort of the first part, where a couple of the trends is, we have a lowering student population, we have rising costs, we have increased numbers of students with high needs in the district. And so please feel free to ask any questions right now.
So I think I saw on the square footage of the numbers of classrooms slide, that the high school has just a little more, what would be recommended as the square footage, but twice as many classrooms? Is that meaning the classrooms are oversized, or what accounts for it?
It took me months to figure that out was a problem. So I suspect, I don't know, I suspect that numbers that we are looking at for the high school are actually net square footage, meaning occupiable spaces, but the MSBA ratio is gross, so they include boiler rooms and things. So I'm trying to either get a hold of the plans or talk to the MSBA. That's a discrepancy, and that's exactly why we're moving to, for the next set of questions, we're going to move to classrooms. Because we do know the classroom numbers are right, but I think that the high school numbers are undersized. There's probably one and a half times that square footage.
I'm curious, on the last slide that was just up, where the data came from? Because I know that for New Braintree, the student numbers and the classroom numbers are not accurate, and I think some of the others might consider that wrong.
These are figures we did get from the district. And I will say, we took the total students divided by the total classrooms. That doesn't mean every classroom is that exact size. Some may be larger and some may be smaller. But this is enrollment data from this fall for the classrooms. And we just averaged, to show what the average enrollment, average students per class would be.
But this makes it appear as though the classroom sizes are smaller than they really are. Because for the fifth grade in Oakham, she has one classroom of 30 kids, there aren't two teachers, but 13 students. The classroom size is a lot bigger.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, thank you. This is helpful. This is something we'll definitely check into before the next meeting that we're going to have. And it's a good point for me to let you know that there's an email address that's being set up for people if you wanted to send in questions prior to the May, or point out, this data doesn't look correct, so we can be prepared to respond to that. But we'll definitely look at that, but thank you for pointing that out. Yes, ma'am.
What are the services that people have to go out, students have to go, special students have to go out of this district or? And where do they go?
So there's no one answer to that, so I'll answer it generally. So for the most part, students in special education who we're talking about, students who have an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, would go out of the district if you can't program for them. You don't have, their IEP requires services that you can't provide in the least restrictive environment, which starts with the regular classroom. You can't provide it through inclusion, you can't provide it through some type of district program that you have. You have a district-wide program for students on the autism spectrum. So there are students who can be in that program, who work very well in that program, and there are others whose particular disability is such that that program won't suffice, and you need some sort of out-of-district placement. So I'm going to talk about this a little bit in the best practices section, but what happens from there is you look at the services available outside the district. So one of the ones that's more cost-effective is through collaboratives, what's called a collaborative. Collaborative is when a number of school districts from this region get together and create programming for, in an area where they may have a few students, and the district next to them has a few students, and this district has a few students, and they create a program for all of those students, preferably in a classroom in their district, in one of the districts. Because if it's created there, then those students can still be included with regular, regular education students from time to time, as their IEPs say. If that's not possible, if you don't, and you belong to two collaboratives that provide some of those services. If that won't work, or if the collaborative doesn't have a program, then you would look at a private school placement. And there are many, many different private schools, some of them probably fairly close, and some of them quite some distance, and then you get into whether the program the student's going to be involved in is going to be a day program, or whether it's going to be a residential program, that would be defined by their need. So that's what those out-of-district placements would look like. And I'm going to talk some more about some recommendations later on.
It's not like art or music?
No, ma'am.
Then who writes the IEP?
So IEPs are written by law, by a team, by a team that includes the parent. They are largely put to paper by someone who functions in the role of a team chairperson. By law, by federal law, there must be someone in the room who has the authority to commit district dollars. That's the law. So if I'm the team chair for an IEP that you're involved in as a parent, and you want us to talk about some particular service, I can't say, "Ooh, you know what, that's a good idea, but I need to go check with the special education director." I'm not allowed by law to do that. By law, there has to be someone in the room who has the authority to commit district dollars, so it's a big responsibility, right? And it's a responsibility of people who are well-trained, and I'm going to talk a little bit about those roles as well.
But it's out of the Department of Education, not from the healthcare arm that writes an IEP. It's all...
So this is, this comes from federal law, federal law, and then there's state law that fleshes that out a little bit better. But federal law requires us to write individualized education plans for students who have disabilities. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How does it work if you have a school choice person who needs special aid? Who pays for that? I'll answer that question, and then I'll follow.
If you have a school choice student who comes to you, for example, from South Cupcake, when they arrive at Quabon Regional Mandate, determined either through parent referral or teacher referral to have a special need or disability that we cannot service within the school district. The team chair from the sending school district can attend the team meeting, and the testing that's done for the individual student is done by a school psychologist, sometimes another person may be brought into the district due to the type of disability the student has. So there's a whole battery of testing that goes on. Then the team meeting, as he does any game, okay, occurs, and the parent is there oftentimes with a capacity to make sure that the student's rights are being, you know, whatever. And then whatever cost that is beyond the $5,000 of school choice money is billed back to South Cupcake, where that student comes from. That's why the South Cupcake district often sends a team chair person, a representative to, and we have students that are, okay, for example, if one of our students at Monty Tech has significant issue in special education, our district, it's a Berry student, Quabon Regional School District will be responsible for paying for that particular student, as our student of residence.
And that's a little bit confusing, school choice with vocationals, but yes, thanks.
So if they're ours, we pay, if it's theirs, they pay, even if they're attending the school here.
Yes, ma'am. So I am the parent of an out-of-district IEP student, and so I do want to just note that, and yes, the sending district pays for the student coming in, just to clarify. But my question is, you noted the amount of special education dollars that are leaving the district because these students are not being able to be serviced here. You note the number of dollars, the amount of students that are coming in or leaving the district, and note that the number of students coming into the district is declining, however, it is still way above the number of students that you are sending. And I just want to know if you have numbers for the number of special education students that are coming into the district, because from my perspective, that number is actually going way up, and the number, and the dollars associated with those students is significantly higher than the number of dollars that are associated with.
So I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you talking about numbers of students who are coming into the district for your district-wide special education programs, or the number of students who are coming in through school choice?
The number of students who come in through school choice?
Through school choice.
Who are on IEPs.
Yeah. I don't, we don't have that number.
I think that might be an interesting number to see.
I didn't see a quick number. Kristen can't be on.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
I'm the Student Services Director. I just want to say, there is a mechanism, and I don't know if I already touched on it, through the circuit breaker reimbursement, that we can get an incremental bump for a special education student who comes into the district through school choice. So we do get additional monies. For example, if we have a student who requires a one-on-one care professional, then we can get a certain amount of money back from the sending district for that. We have, I'm going to say, because we just did it over April vacation, roughly, please don't hold me to this, roughly 60 special education students who come in on school
So the special education table that we put up there does not include federal grant monies or the circuit breaker money. It is in the report, and I don't have my glasses on, but I think the circuit breaker is $766,000, which is not in that table, so it's on top, and we have federal grants in the tune of $192,000. So in addition to that table, there are other resources, as you pointed out.
You said that we've been sort of amnesty, grandfathered state funding-wise, because even with our thousand less kids over 100 that you had put, have you seen any other districts where, because the two trend reports that we've seen over the last, you know, year, have 20 projections making the line still like this as far as the moment, going in the wrong direction? Have you seen anywhere else that eventually gets so disparaging between what it used to be and what it is, that they might only say, you know what, we can't do that 20 anymore?
Well, I think I was going to say, so the answer's no. But, but it's a, there's a huge asterisk next to that no, right? Which is that this, and I think I said this the last time we were here, the Commonwealth is beginning, not soon enough in my opinion, a conversation about the foundations, the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. Because quite frankly, in a number, this is being said at a number of school committee meetings and in a number of communities, the funding formula is beyond broken, beyond broken. The idea that they're now, instead of running a, funding a formula, they're just giving you $25 or $35 or $55 per student is accentuating the problem. You know, state funding's supposed to address the needs of communities that can't address their own funding, right? Or can't address their own funding as much as others. If I give every pupil $55, I'm not doing that. And that's what we've done in this Commonwealth for a number of years now, and so the formula's broken. And the Foundation Budget Review Commission pointed out very clearly that at least in two areas, special education and health insurance, you know, the formula's broken pretty badly. There are some efforts now to move that along, but that's not going to come, not going to come this year. Yes, sir.
Here's a caveat to that. When you talk about the state funding, and for towns like ours, the state was putting additional funds in to encourage us to regionalize, to get the towns to group together for purposes of supposedly providing better education. And they would give us more money per pupil, they would supposedly pay for the busing and that sort of thing, and of course, they've fallen apart.
Yes. Yes, they have. Yeah, no, we've, in the course of some of these projects we've been involved in, we've looked at what has happened in other states that have truly looked at incenting districts to regionalize, or to better regionalize, or to close schools. And in some of those states, Vermont's a great example, where they did clearly, if towns, communities voted to do that, they did incent them. At the end of three years, if they didn't, they had penalties built into place if they didn't. But there are other places that have done this much better than Massachusetts, is the easiest way for me to say. Yes, sir?
My question revolves around the collaborative issues, and I think that as we move further and further out from local government, I begin to have some contempt for their decision-making. There have been a number of cases where it's just been outright fiscal mismanagement in some of these collaborative.
Well, there's been one.
I think there's been one in that.
There's been one that's dominated the press two years back, but yes, okay.
Yeah, and I guess the further and further out you go with the local control, the less control we have over it. I realize, you know...
Well, but that, and I know we want to move on to other sections, but the only thing I'll say to that is, I don't know if that's what we mean by local control, because quite frankly, well, no, no, no. So those collaborative boards are made up of school committee members or superintendents from those communities. I've sat on a number of those boards, and by the way, collaboratives that you are not reading about in the paper, but it can be, no, I know you didn't. It can be done. There are stories behind a number of those issues. You know, we may disagree on that, the biggest advantage of collaboratives, I mean, you want to talk about losing control of your dollars, don't have collaboratives, don't have your own district-wide programs, and deal with placements strictly at private schools. You don't have any control over those conversations. At a collaborative, you have a superintendent, you have a school committee member who sit there and make those programmatic and fiscal decisions, which can be a huge advantage for your district. Time, we're done, we're moving on. Okay, so, okay, so the second section, again, the first section we saw, that was easy. So now we'll move on to the second section, which is really around values and principles. So just understand that as you see the report, as you see this material over the next few weeks, you're going to see that we take a look at these issues through a financial lens, that is, you know, what's happening in terms of dollars as we consider these issues, these situations, from an operational lens, including transportation, those kinds of things, what happens there as a result of an option that we might put on the table. Clearly, and it's one of the reasons I'm here, from an academic, from a programmatic lens, and I'm going to talk about four or five of those kinds of things upfront here, from community values, and large, what you're going to see here is a great deal of the information that you all contributed if you sat in on any of those sessions that you were part of. I want to say here, before we start, that these, particularly these best practice pieces that we're going to put on the table to start here, you know, we didn't come in here using the word recommendation, right? We're talking about options largely in this report, putting options in front of the community for you to consider, hopefully through your, this values lens. I will say, as Monica said earlier, there are some things where, that we're going to talk about now in this section, that are recommendations. There are recommendations around some best practices, the recommendations around things that, as Monica said, that we may put on the table if we didn't see them or saw certain other things in any community, we'd be putting some of these things on the table for your consideration and discussion. So in addition, we look at things like transportation and class size, and then this metric of, what are the strengths of doing this issue, what are the weaknesses that may be inherent here, what are the opportunities that this presents for the district, and then what are the threats, what are the things, you know, that might stand in the way of doing this? Whose toes might get stepped on in this particular issue that we're considering? So there were a series of community conversations, and many of you took part in those, thank you very much. I was here for the student, president of the student discussion, and I just have to say, as, you know, lifelong educator, that was a terrific session. I wasn't at the other... I wasn't at the other, I'm sure they were great. The session with your students was magnificent. You have great kids at the high school level who really put some great ideas on the table, and they were not shy. And we really appreciated that. There are four conversations, two report outs, and recording on table and wall graphics as part of, as part of the session. And so there were key questions in those, given the facts that hard decisions will have to be made, what do we value, how might those values guide us in the decisions that we're going to have to make? What creative ideas do we have to strengthen the district financially and help students get a great education? And I think you're going to see a great deal of that in these areas of recommendation, and you're going to have a lens, here it is, that you can use in terms of considering some of these other things. So what are our values? General community values, people talked about these issues, right? Improving educational outcomes, the district reputation, making sure we're financially sustainable. Students put forward a number of things, increasing enrollment, they talked about finances as well, they talked a lot about educational outcomes, the kinds of programming that are available for them. Community performance metrics, what kinds of lens should we look through to measure these things? Here's a list of some things that people put on the table in terms of student safety, do we offer extracurricular activities? What are our strengths and how do we play to those? How do we make sure we address student diversity? Students talked about these things as well, again, educational outcomes, very concerned about positive perceptions about their school. The variety and level of extracurriculars and the quality of curricular innovation. You're going to see a great deal of that marbled into some of these things that I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. So we have a set of principles that we use in our work that guides us in recommendations, options, whatever we may put on the table for you to consider. Here they are. Acknowledge that change needs to occur. I think I said this the last time I was here, I would add, I'm just going to add to that, and that it's not, and that that help is not coming from the state. So if you're waiting for the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations to get implemented, and that's going to drive all kinds of money here, it's not going to happen. What we heard in meetings in the secretary's office and other places, Secretary of Education's office and other places, is communities are going to have to begin to figure out some of these things on their own. That's not a great answer, but it is the answer. Maximize funding spend in the classroom. So to make sure that when we're looking at how you're going to spend your money, we're making sure that whatever we put on the table for you to consider maximizes what we're doing for kids in the classroom to improve programming for them. Use the space efficiently and uses the best space first. Okay? To make sure that we are, we're looking at how to best use the spaces that you have, and in terms of being able to identify the best spaces, that that's where we go first. Place students at the center of all decisions. Rigor, transparency, and accountability in decisions, I think you're going to see some examples of that, even in the next four or five things that I'm going to talk about. And consider a new concept of small town that involves collaboration that does not emphasize autonomy. I was glad to hear some of these, because they say we want to work together to solve these problems. And one of the inherent problems sometimes that we've seen and that others have seen, the Donahue Institute and others have seen, is that's hard in regional school districts where that individual town identity supersedes that we're here about all of our kids from this jointure that we decided to create because we thought it was the best way to deliver these services. And strive for three-plus graduates per grade. I mean, I'll just say a thing about that, a bit about that here at the beginning, and then go into it in a little bit more detail. That's because of programming, right? If you're going to, if you're going to, if you're going to create the right kind of programming for kids, let's talk about kids on IEPs, and you want to be able to make sure you have inclusion opportunities, you don't do that as well in a one-section, you don't do it very well at all in a one-section or two-section school. It takes a number of sections to be able to do that and do it well. There are a number of other pieces attached to that that you'll see on a slide later on, but really, that's the sweet spot, we believe. So here are some of those recommendations. We're going to start, I think, oh, there are 11, maybe with sub-sections, and so here we go. So the first one really focuses on special education. It says reduce special education enrollment and cost financing, regular education programming, special education data collection and control, and reducing out of district placements, I would add there where appropriate. And so there's some things we're going to, I'll just put them all up here so I can talk through them. So we talked a little, I don't have to define team chairs now, right? So again, team chairs are the people who run those meetings, who have to by law have the ability to authorize the expenditure of funds. And in my experience, the more limited the number of people you can have doing that, the better trained that they are, the better outcome students receive at an efficient cost. And I want to say here that your district's doing a good job with this. You have three team chairpersons. What we like a lot about the model is that they cross over buildings. Many districts do these within buildings, and so you lose out on transitions, right? Your district has a model set up where people transition from upper elementary into the middle grades, that's a good model. It makes sure that as students transition from one school to another, that somebody's aware of that as they're transitioning, makes their service delivery better. So that's good. I'm going to come back and talk about team chairs in a little bit. Data is really important. It is really important that the person in that special education role and those team chairs can talk about where are our referrals coming from? Are teachers making referrals? Are students, or are teachers making referrals, are parents making referrals? Because if I see large numbers in one of those two areas, it tells me two completely different things. So I need to know that. When I look at my out-of-district placement numbers, do I see patterns? Is there a pattern there that suggests to me that there's an opportunity for a district-wide program, something that we could build in the district? If I don't have data on those things, then I don't know the answer to those questions. If I don't know the answer to those questions, then I'm spending money irresponsibly. And I would argue I'm not providing kids with the best service, which quite frankly, to me is more important. Staff all kindergarten and first grades with paraprofessionals. You have a number of kindergartens that do have a paraprofessional in the class. Paraprofessional is a person other than the teacher who provides support to students. Okay? Some of them are teacher-certified, some of them are not. We have found, and the research suggests, that by putting paraprofessionals, not paraprofessionals who are associated with an individual student's IEP, a paraprofessional in the room in every kindergarten and every first grade, you will reduce the need for the number of paraprofessionals in later grades. You will not have as many conversations in IEP meetings about the need for a one-to-one And the good news is, you have some of them in place already, and we believe, as you look at the report, that if you look at some of the other areas where you do have paraprofessionals, that there may be some opportunity over time to redeploy and actually do this at very little cost. Regular education supports. So here's what we're encountering as we're doing this work across central and western Mass. We've described the demographics of what's going on, declining numbers of students, more opportunities for students to go to other places, right? Less state money, difficulty in terms of our own budgets. So many of these districts, yours to some extent, they do what is very logical, they have to cut. Where do they cut? They cut regular education supports. They cut interventionists. They cut reading specialists, whatever you call them. They cut guidance. They cut adjustment counselors. And here's what I know from being in this business a long time. Parents will still find a way to get the services for their kids that they need. So if you don't have it as a regular education intervention, then parents will request an evaluation, and they'll get it through an IEP. The difference between an IEP and a regular education intervention is that the IEP is a legal document. I'd rather provide service for kids through regular education interventions than a legal document if I had the choice. So we see cuts in those services, and what do we see as an indicator that this may be a problem? Remember the slide I showed you earlier that said you were below the state averages in special ed and now you're above? That's one. That's one indicator. That's one indicator that you may be seeing that as an issue. Now, that can point to other things. It can point to the fact that you don't have the right kind of support and programming in place, for example, around, one of the areas that we're all seeing as a major point now, and that's social emotional issues of students in our schools. So there are lots of things that could indicate, which again, by the way, you'll see through your data. This last one is really a sort of big aha for us. So Monica showed you the issues around the percentage of your school buildings that are used. And so I just want to say this as respectfully as I can, I understand why you've made some of the decisions around placing certain programs in certain buildings. You have a pre-K program that's located in New Braintree. You have an autism program that's located in New Braintree. What I will say to you, as respectfully as I can, is you didn't make those decisions because those were programmatically good decisions. Because that's not where you would put those programs if you were worried about, if you were worried about the quality of the program and serving those students. You would have them more centrally located. So we're going to show you later on, you know, who is in your pre-K program. They're not from New Braintree. We could show you who's in that autism program. They're not from those areas of the district. We believe, your administration believes, if you had more, if you had more of those programs centrally located in pre-K, for example, that you'd be serving more kids who need that programming and therefore heading off programmatic issues for those students later on in their school career, and therefore, if you're a financial person, driving down your costs. So a decision you've made, which could have been about occupying space that's available, is driving other costs later on. It's driving additional costs later on down the road. So it's not a smart programmatic decision, and it's not a good financial decision. It's a space-occupying decision from our perspective. Oh, and professional learning goals, what we set here is make sure that you're focusing those goals of your building, the goals of teachers, around, the goals for administration, around how do we make sure that teachers have what they need to serve kids of very different needs in their classroom? And how do we put that into our professional development, make sure it's part of our professional development plan, that it is the focus? How do we include kids in our classrooms? Second one was increase enrollments of high school by increasing offerings and incenting students' parents to choose the regional public schools for their secondary education. So a number of things that we set here. First of all, create partnerships with your vocational schools. So you're unique in that you belong to two different vocational schools, granted, three of the towns belong to one, two to the other. And I'll give you an example, just an individual issue that we've discussed. So you have one vocational school Pathfinder that is in the midst of closing their plumbing program. Right? I will tell you, throughout the Commonwealth, a very popular program, and the second criteria to me is even more important, that is a program where there are jobs. Good jobs. And they're closing the program. Your other vocational, Monty Tech, that program is full, bursting at the seams with a waiting list. So how do you make sure that your students have access to a program that provides a good education and can provide them with jobs? And what we're suggesting here is that in that area and some other cases, you look at partnering with them. And the reason this is such a good time to have this conversation is the state right now is very worried about waiting lists in vocational education. I'm at a school where we have 360 seats for freshmen, and I had 1,100 applicants this year. So we're trying to figure out ways to partner with our member districts to start programs at their locations to serve kids from the member districts. You have that opportunity too, because you have space. And you have a willing partner in Monty Tech to look at expanding their footprint, for example, for a plumbing program in partnership with you. And your students told us that they want this. They want these opportunities here at their high school. So it's a win-win-win-win. Actively strive to retain your seventh and eighth graders. So here's what's happened to all of us. Public school people, starting with me, are not the best people at sort of recruiting and understanding those strategies that, by the way, the charters, the private schools, the vocational schools, all get. They get how to recruit your students. Some of them don't have to. Monty Tech, I understand, doesn't have to, because they've established such a great foothold and have established such a great reputation that your students do sell it for them. They sell the next group on doing that. And what we're suggesting here is that public schools, yours in particular, because we're working with you here, need to understand this and apply those same kinds of strategies. The advantage you have is they're all in the same building. Students you're trying to recruit and keep are in this building. And so there are things you can do, right? You can look at things, and all these came from your students, who said, why don't our middle schoolers have opportunities to participate in more of the extracurriculars and all with high school, high schoolers? Why don't we have an opportunity, why don't middle schoolers have an opportunity in some cases to take classes? Certain classes that are offered in the high school? Right? We need to think more about those kinds of things. We need to think about how we can break down whatever walls, real or imagined, exist between two schools that are located in the same building. Mentors attending classes, those kinds of things. Recommendation number three was conduct an outside review of the costs and benefits of the IB program. I need to start by saying I am a big IB fan, so I'll acknowledge that upfront, right? And so what we encountered, again, largely through students, was this, we had students in those sessions who said the best thing about this high school is the IB program. And we had other students who said the first thing that should go is the IB program. Okay? And what we got from that, from digging a little deeper with them, is that there wasn't a great deal of understanding, that maybe the implementation wasn't done as well as it could have been, that maybe the teachers, some of them aren't as on board as they could have been to make this successful. I will tell you that an IB program implemented and done right, if you're looking for something that makes you the destination in this area, that's one of the things that could do it. Done wrong, it's not. And so what we're suggesting here is really a study on that, and maybe a sort of a reboot of how do you look at this program and whether it can be that big draw for our high school. So recommendation number four is to enhance your nepotism policy to eliminate any perception that there's preferential hiring for relatives of central office administrators and school committee members. And here's the discussion that we've had with them. So there is no evidence, that we have seen, none, zero, that nepotism is an issue. But strangely enough, through these things that we do, it did come up a number of times. So that's called perception issue. And perception issues are problematic, sometimes more problematic than real issues. And so what we're suggesting is to look at the policy. Now, we did, and it's a good, solid nepotism policy. What we've suggested is that there are some districts who've gone slightly further with that issue, and we recommended a couple of policies. But I want to be really clear, this is a perception issue, this is not something that we've seen any evidence of, and it's here because it came up as a topic of conversation in some of those forums, enough that we felt the need to address it here. And five is place accountability for performance, but the adults, not the students. For example, adopt language designed to ensure that the needs of low-income and special education students are not blamed for districts' concerns. So I'll speak individually on this. So I've been here for, I think, almost every meeting except for those two community forums. And I've heard some things in the discussion that have been troubling to me as a school administrator and as a parent of a child with an IEP, that I would consider to be blaming of a particular group of students for our district's budget problems. Some of them resident students, and some of them affiliated with the school down the street, the Stetson School. You can do that, you can do that, and you will still have the problem at the end of the day. That's not going to solve the problem, which by the way, is not about special education The first thing, and it's in the report that I would recommend here, is that we adopt norms that say that's not okay. Ever. Ever. Because that's not going to solve the problem. There are lots of ways to program for all of our children. So I was in a district of nearly 8,000 kids in Brookline, and we had 60-some students in out-of-district placements, 61, because we were able to build a lot of programs in district, et cetera. A member of the finance committee said to me one night, when do A member of the finance committee said to me one night, "When do we have zero in out-of-district placements?" And I said, "Never, not ever going to happen." Because there are students in this district who require programming through collaboratives or private schools that we could never create, that they need, and I will drive the check there every day for them. For others, we believe we could create programming, and we did. And their parents were thrilled that their children could attend school in our district. Because no parent I've ever met is thrilled that their child was placed in a date program, an hour and a half bus ride away. None, I've never met one. If there's somebody here, maybe this will be the first, but I've never met one. And so I guess what I'm saying as respectfully as I can is let's stop it. It happens in communities, again, where budgets become issue, but it's not going to solve the problem. It's not going to solve the problem, and it's not, more importantly, it's not going to contribute to solving any of the problems that you face.
So to follow up on that last one, and also the special education, I mentioned earlier in a small meeting, but I have a son on IEP as well. We adopted him through the Department of Children and Families, and he's in a social-emotional program in Boston, which is fabulous, it's helping him tremendously. But he wasn't born in Boston, and he didn't experience trauma in Boston. He was born in central Massachusetts, in a small town. Not here, but not terribly different than the small towns that we have here. So what I want to say is there are children, and we see in your numbers, there's a number of children with social-emotional needs that are actually out of district. This is an issue that's happening all over the state, all over the country, with the drug and alcohol, with domestic violence, with the financial pressures that families are feeling, with the opioid issue. There's a lot of children in our homes, and they may look exactly like your house as well, that are in situations where they are being traumatized, and it literally affects their brain. It changes the wiring in their brain in ways that scientists are learning right now, and phenomenal information out there. But the flip side is there's tremendous progress in how to train teachers, how to offer supports in school, and the kids can rewire and come forward in really great ways. But it's one of the areas where I think you guys in this district could really benefit from contemplating more in-house social-emotional opportunities. Budget transparency. So in four out of the last six fiscal years, the district has not had a budget before July 1st. We know that's been difficult for everybody that has been involved. We know the state has had to get involved in one of those years to actually adopt a budget. This recommendation just is to really hit home that how important transparency is when there are areas of fiscal challenge. We are recommending, and this is allowed under state law, that the district create a regional budget advisory board. These would be representatives from the towns, who would in effect get the same level of information that school committees get about the budget, would have opportunity to ask questions, to sort of push back. But it could be part of that bridge between the town and the school district where, because they have informed themselves more about the budget, they can go speak to others and speak to needs while also representing the towns' needs and the challenges they face in providing municipal services with the dollars they have available to do that. In addition, there are certain financial data that the state says does not have to be made public. The circuit breaker, some of the school choice data. We understand the district already does report that out to the public. We want to encourage you to make sure that all of the funding sources available to balance the budget are made available to the public so that they can understand the federal grants, the school choice, all those different resources and how they're deployed. This is a pretty common one. Labor salaries is a big financial percentage of the budget. Most of the budget is typically in salaries. We just want to encourage, and I know that it's time to renegotiate the teacher's contract, to look at the cost of living. Your cost of living, I think, was at 2% or 2.5%, and the actual cost of living increases in these years have been less. So to be very rigorous in your negotiations with the teachers, and also contemplate the median cost of living here compared to the statewide, cost of living is lower. So all of our teachers, all of our staff like to compare ourselves to other communities, but we should also, the school committee should also weave into that a look at what the cost of living is here relative to state of Massachusetts. Also, review the stipends. There's a list of stipends, in the contract, we don't believe they're all being paid out. These are for teachers taking on additional duties, like coaching a team or performing, insisting in a musical. But at some point, when there's so many stipends, it becomes almost a culture of, "If you want me to do it, you have to be a stipend to do something." And that's not the kind of culture that the district wants to have. Continue to have discussions with surrounding communities. As I said, there are communities throughout this area that are also having declining enrollment and could possibly become either members of the agreement or paying tuition. We do recommend that a task force be created for western Worcester County. There's actually a great model in Berkshire County right now that has secured grant funds for the whole county to look at this at an even bigger level than a regional school. And also to continue to participate in the small and rural school committee, which is really getting out there on these issues that are unique to the rural communities. I'm trying to get to the facilities one. Improve communication and sense of commitment. We think that students and parents should have a regular survey that they receive to let you know what they think you're doing well, what they think needs to change. As Bill said, the students are very articulate and have some really great ideas. That can be made routinized. If you ask the same questions year over year, you can see how people's attitudes are changing toward the district. Allow students to have a greater say at the school committee. We understand there is a school committee rep from the students. But we really want to encourage to make that a tremendously meaningful role. And there's details in the report, but they're the voice of the people who are actually your customers, who are receiving your services, and they really should have a greater say. I think they didn't stay through the whole meeting or something? That, yeah, I can't remember. Recommendation 10 is really pointed toward the towns. The towns, we would want to encourage the towns to get together to talk about your common vision for the future for this area. Because the land use policies that each of the towns have affects how the population grows, how economic opportunity happens or doesn't happen in the area. And the platform of the school-based issues could serve as a platform for having that conversation town-to-town about the land use regulations, about how we can use economic development to not only help our financial resources, but also to bring people back to the area. Amend the regional agreement. There is a structural problem, in a sense, in the way the regional agreement is written that brings us here today. The agreement specifically says that for a school to close, that the town has to vote to close the school. Not all of the regional agreements are written in that way. Some of the regional agreements allow the school committee to make decisions regarding facility closings, regarding relocation of grades to different classrooms. The dilemma at the New Braintree School that Bill spoke to of having the pre-K there and having the autism program there, in a way, was a creative attempt to keep that building in use as is required under your regional agreement. Programmatically, it's not an optimal solution to do that. So how can the structure of the agreement be revised so that the school committee can be nimble enough to address changes in enrollment, whether it's up or down? I would encourage the communities to really have a discussion about modifying the agreement as it relates to how to close a school. And in doing so, looking at how the capital costs, particularly with the school closure, the language around capital costs is that the town pays for the capital over a certain amount. If the schools are combined, that's not going to be equitable. Whether it should be proportionate to the students in that building or whether it should be proportionate to the district as a whole, is a conversation that needs to be held. And also amend the way that students are assigned to elementary schools. Again, the way the agreement is written, the student is expected to go to the building that's in their town, and only in very special exceptions can they go someplace else. So just by virtue of the facility conversation, that might need to be looked at. But it also, again, affects the nimbleness, the ability to change and to modify based on changing circumstances. Thank you. So that's our best practices.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I saw one of your slides talking about needing to keep seventh and eighth graders, and I'm interested. But I think, first, the problem of, it goes back to K through six. And a few, not too many years ago, I had a fellow mentor, one of the best rated mentor schools in the state, and we drew a large number of students from the largest population in the area, which is where? Because of the convenient location for them to bring people into, you know, and get into the Quabin School District. And I've seen that decline, you know, in where being, like I said, the biggest population in the area and the biggest draw, and current elementary being closer than the best draw.
Yeah, so the question, right, becomes why?
It becomes not the same, it's more...
Well, that's right, and that's actually, that's right, and I would consider that to be a separate one of these recommendations. Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
It's not just the students regarding, it's the involved parents, which contribute a lot to the whole thing, it's not just students.
Right, and without going into it, I mean, I'll just stick to sort of the general statement. So I would consider that under a different recommendation here. I would consider that to be the recommendation about looking at the communities around you to figure out what's going on there in terms of school choice, what might be going on there in terms of the ability to tuition students, what's going on there in terms of the idea of adding other towns to your regional agreement. Again, a lot has changed since that 2008 high watermark in school choice. Some of it has to do with your district, and some of it has to do with decisions those other districts have made. Charter schools, the resurgence of vocational education. I mean, there are a lot of things, not all of which impact elementary, right? Some of which more impact high school. But you're right, and I would consider that to be under the recommendation that we've included there. Sorry, pardon me, sorry.
Sorry, so you talked about partnering with vocational schools.
Yeah.
Did you also look at, I didn't see it specifically, meaning the local community colleges?
That's in the report, it isn't on the slide, but it's actually in the report, yes. Yes.
One of the first slides, we can handle the best space first.
Yes.
Find the best space.
We're going to do that in section three.
Can you talk a little bit more about the vocational offering? Because I went to a high school in Connecticut that was a regional school similar to this. And back in the 90s, they added a vocational program. Twenty years later, it's one of the top rated public schools in the state. How viable, how much research have you done, what would it be, has that activity actually occurred here?
Um...
Like a huge cultural program where state funded?
Yes, and the yes and yes, just all that, right? So we're in an interesting time, you did a really particularly great time. I mean, the history on this is that Massachusetts, like many other states, had many, what I would consider to be comprehensive, high schools at one time. Massachusetts, for whatever reason, made a choice to create stronger regional vocational school models, and many districts shut down their vocational components. In Beverly, where I live, they did, right? Mid-'90s. Here, I understand you did. Burlington, I have a good friend who's superintendent there, they did the same thing. Some, mainly urban areas, kept them. So you still have a very strong vocational component at Somerville High School. Very, very strong vocational component at Bedford High School. So there are some, right? Taunton is now adding. So the time that we're in now is one where in many, many places, you have schools like mine, where the demand is far exceeding the supply of programming. And so the state is incenting through two rounds of grants, and there are more to come, people to look at creative solutions. And we actually are in discussions with one of our member districts about exactly what we've recommended here, right? So I know it's a viable solution because we consulted with a department on it and those kinds of things. You have to have a vocational superintendent director who's willing to do that, right? And a partner, K through 12 superintendent, who's willing to look at some creative approaches to add in seats where there is need for a particular occupational area. So there are a number of different areas. I mean, I talked about the plumbing, biotech, environmental tech, are other areas that in my school interest students who are coming from our member districts, who are very interested in the sciences. And by the way, for many of you who think you know what vocational schools look like, these are not the students who went to the vocational school when I taught in one back in the 1980s, right? They are the top science students out of those, out of those member districts of ours. Wouldn't it be better if we could partner with a couple of them around, around that kind of programming? And then we think because of your space and the good partners and the good reputation of Monty in particular, that you have a really unique opportunity to do that here.
As a school committee member for Pathfinder, it seems to be, seems to call for a real mindset shift. We have seen, not necessarily from the member grounds here that are represented in our district, but school districts actually circling the wagons and not allowing their children to talk to somebody in a vocational setting.
Which is not legal.
But it gets back to one of the ethics, or one of the rules, it's about the students.
Yes.
It's about the student experience. And so I think it's going to be a mindset shift for vocational schools to collaborate with regional. It's possible that there's a program that a vocational school doesn't have the capacity to offer because of the size of the school or constraints in classes like plumbing or biotech. But if the facility and the space is here, if space is a constraint, and that's the only constraint, then it makes sense to collaborate.
So for us, thank you for the, for us, the model is that on the North Shore, where I live, it's medical careers that are the number one employer, machining is the second employer. We have dental assisting, we have health assisting, we do not have medical. Salem has started a medical, and so the conversation we're having, and we have space, and we have space. But they have the program, right? And can we help participate in building that and then make it available to the other 16 member communities? And the answer's been, let's try it, let's figure it out, let's figure out if we can break down, you're right, let's figure out if we can break down some of these walls, because there are walls.
That's kind of a fall of comment to that, and very important to learn that. Representative Quabin visited Pathfinder to look at how things work there. So I think the dialogue is happening, and that's encouraging because we're realistic. Not only either of us want to circle our wagons, we want to provide the best student experience.
No, no, you're absolutely right about it. The only people that lose, as I've said to the superintendents for my 17 member communities, the only people that lose when we circle the wagons are our kids.
Yeah, we were comprehensive by the way, as you mentioned. We changed to just an academic because it was becoming increasingly costly to keep up with the cat cams and all the various things. And we could provide a much better, much more quality, much more cost-effective vocational education for the kids by sending them to some folk school.
Absolutely, and what I'm suggesting here as one example is a program that isn't going to be at one of your schools, so three towns that belong there, kids will no longer have access to that program. Another school where they could tuition, right, except there's no room. And it's an area where there are jobs. Your local workforce investment board says there are jobs. And so is there some way that Quabin can be a partner with Monty, not set out on their own, in creating a sort of a second program of that area and looking at other areas?
A second one is great. I'm just providing historical background.
Understood, oh, I understand.
On why we were not, to this day, comprehensive.
And you were in good company with lots of other districts.
We have been in touch, and a lot of communication with Monty Tech. They have even indicated that one way we could do it is we would provide the academic feast for kids, and they would open their lattice to us at a cost of between 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon. It's a bussin' nightmare. It's a bussin' nightmare, and we know that it would be really difficult for some of our students to be here during the day and then spend them two hours over at MINE Tech. But we have had conversations with MINE Tech, they are very open minded to working with us, we with them, as we have had lots of conversations with Mount of Massachusetts for various kinds of programs for community college investment with us. So we're on our way to working through some of those issues.
You know, we could talk about a lot about this, but I'm being told it's 7:30, and we haven't gotten to the third part, which is what many of you came to see. Let me take one more. Yes.
It seems as though the dichotomy between vocational and the academic education is one curriculum, and I love your goal to make, I don't know how to say it, complex, and the general education, to make that the main effort. And to include, for instance, nobody's mentioned information technology.
Right. Those schools, I think, have that program.
That's where it's going. I mean, we're all going to be wired.
Yeah, there are reasons for the resurgence in vocational education across the state and actually across the country. There are reasons, I don't want to take the time with that tonight. So we're gonna move on to part three. And again, if you have other questions on that section, that's a great section, I feel like that section, right? And please, I think in terms of this website that's gonna go up or other questions you have, please send them to us, and we'll talk about them on the next.
Thank you. So we're now gonna move on to space use alternatives. I will point out we're after 7:30, so I'm gonna try to get through this efficiently. I know this is gonna be very difficult. Hopefully people can bear with us on that. So, we have in the report, developed 14 interrelated alternatives for space use. Two for the middle school, one for the high school, and then 11 for the elementary schools. And each of them in the report has an analysis, a detailed analysis. For tonight, I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, I'm just gonna highlight sort of the more intensive ones, and you'll be able to read some of the other ones as well. The alternatives offer between $318,000 and $1.5 million of savings. This is in year two going forward, because the first year of the consolidation, if there are employee reductions in force, there is unemployment that has to be paid. So for each of the alternatives, we tell you our estimate for the year one savings, and then the savings for year two and going forward. And importantly, perhaps most importantly, they offer considerable academic benefits. So I hope this far along in the conversation, we've seen how the interconnection between how the physical facility is used, the numbers of classrooms, the academics, and the budget pressures. Because they're all intertwined. This exercise is not just about dollars. If it was just about dollars, it's not something that would be as interesting to us. We want to help you, again, create a solid foundation for educating the students going forward, and that's looking at these physical changes from an academic lens as well. So the principles, to repeat what happened before, to maximize the funding spent in the classroom. Dollars that are spent on lighting, and on heating, and on cooling, and on transportation that may not be as needed are dollars that are not actually in the classroom. Administrative staff in each of the buildings also is dollars that are not in the classroom. Use space efficiently and use the best space first. And I know there's a question, that's in quotes for a reason, right? Because we all have different ideas of what best space would be. What I will say for the exercise that we went through is to look at which buildings had the most amenities, which had had investments in capital or were relatively new. In that case, the building that we're in, the high school, middle school complex, has the most amenities of all of the buildings in the district with the lab space, and the gyms, and the cafeteria, the auditorium, et cetera. So in one way, using the best space first, in this exercise means trying to maximize the utilization of this building, and then see how everything else then goes from there. Place students at the center of all decisions, three plus classrooms per grade. So to do the mathematics of what we did, we relocated students as a group. If school A, the scenario closed school A, then we moved all of the students mathematically to school B, and we saw what that meant. The only exception to moving them as a group is the Rubbles Lane School, which because it's the single largest school, none of the other schools could absorb all of the Rubbles Lane enrollment. So we did have to be more fine grained to move those students to actually three different facilities to make the numbers work. But other than that, we combined them as a group. We added bus routes, and each of the scenarios says how many bus routes we added in our cost estimates. But what I want to point out is that adding a bus route is not cost prohibitive in any of these scenarios. Our personal goal is to keep the travel time to less than an hour each way. But if another bus needs to be added beyond what we had calculated, because we don't have all the raw, you know, detailed data of where the households are, it's only a $9,150 cost, it's not gonna make or break any of the scenarios. So transportation, in some sense, should not be an impediment because you'll be able to add routes if needed. And here forward in the analysis, we used the specific rooms in the specific buildings. Before, when we were identifying, is there a problem or not, we were using sort of statewide ratios. But herefore, we're gonna use actual building rooms, actual classrooms. But first, a look at where do our children live? This is a map that shows the number of children per census block. It's a bit challenging because all of the blocks are not the exact same size, and some of the blocks are particularly large. But I think you can see some patterns where Hubbardston to the north definitely has a number of blocks with some large student population residents. There's also a cluster in the center of Berry, the center of Ocam. The dark blue in Hardwick is a residential private school, so those are not, those students are not eligible to come to Quabon, and that's why that block is pointed out. But it starts to get, sort of, there are big areas where there are littler or no youth. Here's a look at the school enrollment of residents. For much of the exercise, we've been looking at all of the children in the school, but we do know with the school choice in, and then with some of the special programs, it's not always the residents. But total numbers of children enrolled, Berry's 360, followed by Hubbardston, 269, Hardwick, Ocam, and New Braintree has 69 resident children in the school districts today. For a total of 980 in the elementary school grades. The pre-K numbers, which Bill had alluded to, are here on this graphic. So we can see that the pre-K enrollment, Berry has 29 students, seven from Hubbardston are traveling down to New Braintree for pre-kindergarten. So that's, that's the pre-K numbers. Okay. So middle school alternatives. The two alternatives, we know that there are a large number of rooms in the middle school that are available. One alternative, we're calling A, is to transfer the sixth grade from the elementary schools to the middle school building here. B is to transfer the fifth grade and the sixth grade to the building here, which has a lot of benefits to it. But this is a look at how the rooms would be used. The first column is existing seventh and eighth grade. We can see there's 15 classrooms today that are not in use to meet the needs. Now, things end up going in those rooms. So if you go walk around, you probably won't see 15 rooms of nothingness, there'll be something in there, but in terms of actual utilization, there are 15 rooms that are in the middle school that are not needed. In the alternative of moving the sixth to eighth grade, with the sixth grade up, we would have eight classrooms that are unutilized. And in B, all of the rooms that are currently dedicated to the middle school are utilized. I will point out that there are multiple rooms in the high school section of the building that are not being used, and there's not a firm barrier, it's just the way that the rooms have been signed. So should alternative B be optimal, there is capacity to move more of the high school rooms over into the middle school area to offer a little bit of flexibility for special programming or something like that. So it's not an absolute rigid number, but it is utilized. So what are the merits of these different alternatives? The first column is the A, moving the sixth graders. Just by virtue of having more students in this building, it'll be more vital, it'll be more energy in the building. The students will have had three years in this building before they make the decision about where to go to high school, it may encourage more to stay here. This building, I perceive, has a sense of ownership from everybody, since it is the shared building for all of the, all the towns. By bringing all the sixth graders into one facility, they'll be able to collaborate with each other. Right now, the sixth graders are in five, four different buildings. So it's very hard to collaborate on curriculum, to identify trends or gaps that the students are having. There'll be ample opportunity for inclusion, which might be able to bring some students in from out of district placements. And the administration, the school committee will be able to decide what format we want to use with our sixth graders. So our high schools and seventh and eighth grade, the students will move around, right? We all remember you go to a homeroom, but then you go to another room for different parts of the day. That will be available if the sixth grader's moving to this building. But it doesn't have to transform the curriculum that way, the students could still say with their primary teacher, just be physically located here. It's a little bit more complex, and they'll be scheduling challenges, but either is an option. They can either stay with the elementary school type of format, or they could move to the middle school type of format. The weaknesses of this is the potential for some teachers to need middle school licenses. If they are in, teaching sixth grade in elementary school, there's a particular license, but if they move into a middle school format, they may have to get new licenses. But we do really feel that the state would be willing to work on waivers or extended time, but the district may need to contribute some dollars to help the teachers pass those tests. And sixth graders have to go to school earlier, sometimes they don't want to get up in the morning, and there may be some with some longer bus routes. If we move the fifth graders, the same opportunities and benefits of column A, but again, fully utilize the middle school classrooms, we would have seven classrooms per grade in seven, sixth grade classrooms, seven fifth grade classrooms. And we just said some teachers may not want to make that transition, some fifth grade teachers or sixth grade teachers may not want to make that transition, so the district may want to be a little bit flexible to allow them to have other alternate placements. But that's, there's more in the report, but those are the basic issues with that. Moving on to the high school. So we've already mentioned two of the recommendations that address the high school. The first was to market the, to the seventh and eighth graders, and then also to consider having vocational programming. And that's really what we've been talking about to this point. This space alternative contemplates returning fully to a comprehensive high school format, which would be to have a vocational school and academic programming in the same building. Now, that is not something that is going to happen like quickly, like flipping a switch. In the report, we talk about a lot of the analysis that would need to be done, there's capital costs, there are areas of expertise that the district is gonna have to bring in-house. You need to really do a cost benefit analysis to say, how many students would I need to create this program in-house to make it worthwhile, how many for this program? But it is an opportunity, it is an option. There is ample room in the high school to go to a full comprehensive format. Even if you just add vocational school, just offerings, there's still a number of classrooms at the high school to do that. I had it right there. This is just an exercise, because we truly don't know how many students would go to a comprehensive high school. But just as an exercise, the first column existing for the 689 students that are enrolled today, there are 28 classrooms that are unused or underused. If we incremented up by 100 students, that would use up five more classrooms, and another increment would be another four more classrooms. So, and it's not gonna be exactly that rigid, because some of the vocational programs will require a lot of space compared to just the homeroom classroom that you go, or your English class. So it's not a pure science, but it does show that there are a lot of rooms for hundreds of more students at the high school. So the academic benefits of elementary consolidation, he does a good.
Okay. Thanks. So this next section deals with elementary issues. So we've talked about some of these in one way or another through, throughout the presentation, but the more equitable opportunity to receive services needed for success, again, you're left, you don't have one and two sectioned schools where there are a lot of services that you cannot provide and drive students to other schools, out of district, district part programs, those kinds of things, and special. Student teacher ratios can be better equalized if students have the opportunity in smaller classes. I mean, we were, I don't remember the numbers, but we had a conversation about something that's happening right now in terms of, I think, enrollment for next year, where enrollment at this school is, you know, high, and enrollment at this school is not. And because of your regional agreement, you don't have the ability, they don't have the ability to equalize those numbers. So parents over here are gonna say, why is our class this large? Probably no one over here is gonna say, why is our class this small? But that could be dealt with if certain actions were taken, and can't be dealt with now. Opportunities for inclusion are more feasible, and that's the one I've talked about. In other words, inclusion means for students with IEPs who require some part of their day out of the regular classroom, they can be included, be part of experiences in the regular classroom much easier, much better for the classroom teachers if there are three of them, three sections. I also had fours in one district, right? Then they can with ones and twos. Just because the numbers begin to get in the way of being able to appropriately include kids in, for example, in a one or two sectioned school. And generally speaking, schools with three to four sections per grade level are able to offer a more varied program and activities. And you see that in example after example of schools of that size. Again, that probably being the sweet spot. Access to regular education supports and specials is more evenly distributed. I had an opportunity to review your travel budget for specialists. These are all specialists and more. You're spending, because of the size of your schools, you're spending considerable dollars on travel for people who have responsibilities at more than one building. ECBAs in special education, guidance people, art, music, those kinds of things. People are traveling, and they don't need to do that, obviously, if there is an appropriate number of students at a particular elementary school. And so there's two things, there's two costs in that, right? One is money, mileage, not as big of a deal, I'll be honest, not as big of a deal in terms of what I was able to review. The second is the lost time while that person's traveling and still has to get all of the pieces of the teacher contract that need to be built into their schedule, all of those things come out. And my guess is, when you look at some of those people that travel, you're seeing a pretty considerable amount of time that is not with students. That's a cost. That sometimes requires you to add more people to do that. So you want to minimize that. And I said this one earlier, relocating pre-kindergarten and special education programs more centrally so that they can be accessed by people where you have a population of students.
So we worked through a series of single building alternatives, there's five. In each of the single building alternatives, we closed one building, relocated the children to a different building, and went through, methodically, through the, each of the five elementary school buildings, and wrote about the challenges, the strengths, the weaknesses of each of those as independent options. This is a table which sort of shows how many classrooms each of the different alternatives would offer. So we start on the left, in the grayish is the actual physical classrooms in the building available for classes. We still, there's still rooms available for art and music, and those were just taken off the table in this exercise. So we don't absorb the art and music rooms in any of the alternatives we're looking at. at. If you look at the 2017 use, that's school year 2017, 66 classrooms are used out of 91 for a 73% utilization rate today for all the elementary school classrooms. After alternative A, which has moved the sixth grade up to the high school, it now becomes more empty, right? So we go from 73 utilization to 63% utilization. But that is what is allowing us to do the exercises of moving, closing various schools. So then after that, we have A1, 2, 3, 4, 5, which shows how many of the classrooms would be utilized. And in each of those, you'll see there's a blank box. That's the school that has disappeared from that scenario there. So the Ruggles Lane alternative uses 83% of the classrooms. But that exercise is, there are more inefficiencies with the Ruggles Lane one than there are efficiencies, although it looks like it's efficient, because basically you're taking the largest school with the largest enrollment and then, and the most centrally located, and then parsing that out among the others. So on paper, it looks like it is increasing utilization, but it's actually a very inefficient way of doing it. But we looked at each one of these in a high level of detail. But what I want to offer you is conclusions as a group. So the single-building alternatives as a group, any one of them, only offers consolidation benefits to two schools. So if we combine A and B, the new B has the three classrooms per grade, it has the class sizes at the district target, it has more teachers in there that can work across the grade, but every other school that wasn't touched has the same smaller class sizes, the underutilization issue. So no one building closure is going to fully utilize the space and fully offer the academic benefits that consolidation of the students will offer. In general, the operating efficiencies are also modest when the two buildings are collapsing to one, in this case. There are meaningful dollars, I mean, there are dollars. The lowest one is $300,000 that do offer financial benefit, but we're trying to layer on the importance of the operational and the academic benefits, not just the purely financial benefits. So then we went through a series of multi-building closures. These are all labeled, the A6 through A9 will go with the A scenario, which is to move the sixth grade to the middle school. B10 and B11 move the sixth and the fifth grade. So there are six of those various alternatives. So I'll go a little bit deeper into that. These are, this is a look at all of the two building combinations where A6, 7, and 8 close two schools, and A9 closes three schools. So you can see if Hardwick and New Braintree, we use 75% of the total classrooms. Hubbardston and New Braintree, we end up using 90% of the classrooms, et cetera, et cetera. Each of them has challenges in terms of where the students will locate, or how many, the bus routes in terms of where the special programs would be, but each of that is detailed in a high level of detail in the report to look at those. In general, two-building alternatives, two buildings closing and collapsing into one or two schools often only offer benefit to three schools. There are literally, two schools can fit into one in some of these scenarios. You can literally take the New Braintree and the, and the Oakham, or in New Braintree and Hardwick and physically put it into one other school and leave another school completely untouched. Many of the classrooms are still unused, there's still going to be inequity, there are operating efficiencies and savings, but they're increasingly substantial, but they're not as substantial as all of the options, the higher options. This is the, these are the two options that are, go with moving the fifth and sixth graders. Here you can see B10 closes Hardwick, Hubbardston, and New Braintree and moves the students into Ruggles Lane and Oakham. And B11 moves, closes Hardwick, New Braintree, and Oakham and moves them into Ruggles and Hubbardston Center. 91% occupancy and 80% occupancy. I'm going to go through the three-building alternatives in a higher level of detail. So for each of the alternatives, you'll see this box at the top, which talks about year one savings, long-term savings, the amount of classrooms used in that building, overall, the percent used, and how many bus routes added, and the little map so you can kind of orient yourself, because there's so many of them. So this is a look at closing Hardwick, New Braintree, and Oakham, leaving open Ruggles Lane and Hubbardston. So New Braintree and Oakham students go to Hubbardston, Hardwick will go to Ruggles Lane, the pre-K and one of the autism programs would go to Ruggles, another autism program from Hardwick Create would go to Hubbardston in this scenario. I'm going to slow down now. So what does this do? And literally, all the students fit, all the students from five buildings fit into two buildings in this scenario, just by moving the sixth graders to the middle school. This optimizes all the space. The two schools that will be remaining will have relatively equal class sizes. They will have three classes per grade, for the most part, there may be one or two that have two classes per grade. By having the teachers in two buildings, and the two buildings are not terribly far apart from each other, they will be able to collaborate across the building, across grades, in a way they can't really do very much right now. They'll also be able to collaborate together, and it's very close to the central administration and close to this building, so there will be opportunities for them to physically get together. The savings, the facilities savings, can not only return savings back to the district and to the communities, but you can also really, really maintain these super well. I mean, there'll be enough dollars to deploy back into the two schools that are remaining to make them really great physical plants for the students. Focusing the energies of the district on two schools instead of five will also, I think, allow more, opportunity for more creative thinking. When you're dealing with five buildings and delivering five sets of lunches and X-number of buses and all this, there's a lot of energy that goes into that very diffused way of operating. We do feel special education costs can start to be caught, got under control as students have the academic supports, because now you'll be able to have the reading specialist and the math specialist and the art and the music and all that programming in those schools so that the parents are feeling their children are able to get regular education supports they need. Challenge with this one in particular is how to design the bus routes to minimize time, particularly for the students from New Braintree and Oakham that would be going to Hubbardston, is a substantial distance. I'm not going to pretend it's not. It is a substantial distance. And winter weather conditions or morning commute traffic can really affect that as well. There are people that you have access to that can look at those routes and what that might be. We know the town of Hubbardston is looking for potential space for some municipal offices. That would not be feasible because all of the Hubbardston rooms would be used. One drawback of this one is, this one literally uses, based on the current enrollment, almost every classroom in those two buildings is utilized. So if we have an uptick in enrollment, or there's a new substantially separate classroom, that's going to be a bit challenging to figure out how to get those into that plan. I will say that the high school still is going to have a lot of capacity, so some creative thinking could be done around that, but it's not perfect. B10. So in this scenario, B10, the fifth and sixth grades move to the middle school building. And we would have Ruggles Lane and Oakham would be open in this alternative. It'll generate $1.3 million of savings in year two. Forty-three out of 47 classrooms would be used, leaving four. It would add a lot of bus routes, but that's not an impediment. So Hardwick and New Braintree would go to Oakham. So the southern, the three southern towns would have a southern school in Oakham, and then Hubbardston would come down to Ruggles Lane for education. And then you can see sort of the, when those students are ready to go to the middle school and the high school, it's really proximate to both the two schools that are open. So in terms of operations, this two school, two remaining, has all the same benefits that the one I described before. The teachers being able to get together, to be able to be efficient in the services, the special education costs. I did note here, again, that there are so many of the classrooms are used in this option that it might be difficult to accommodate new. On the other hand, we do have to be realistic that the projection is not, that there's going to be growth in the student at this grade level, but perhaps. And the difference in this one, it does not have as much of a transportation impact on the Hardwick and the New Braintree, sorry, Hardwick and New Braintree students. And actually, the bus for New Braintree and Oakham goes to both schools at the same time, so those students will actually have a slightly, a few minutes shorter commute in this option. This one is the same as A9, but in this case, the fifth grade is moved up to the middle school, which addresses some of that overuse of the space in this scenario that was looked at earlier. So, and it offers just shy of $1.5 million of savings. But again, has the transportation benefits, the transportation drawbacks that the other one did. So that was a really short snippet of quite a long analysis. And there are no perfect answers in this situation. There are strengths and weaknesses of each of the various options that are explored. But we did spend some time to think about, you know, what would be the next steps here forward? We are going to come back again two weeks from now, whatever, May 11th?
May 10th.
For, May 10th. And I think we can dig in a lot more deeply into each of the options, if the group would like to do that. I can be prepared to put more of them up on the screen. But the process of winnowing it down would be one of the next steps, having community meetings, having community conversations, and we know there's funding for a facilitator to come help in the next part of the dialogue. And the third bullet is sort of allowing time to mourn the change. You know, any one of these changes affects literally everybody in the five-town area, right? Even those schools that are staying open are going to be different schools than they are today. Those schools that are closing, there is, and we think there's a need for a time for people to say, this is not the outcome that I would have wanted, and to have time to mourn, and then that gives you an opportunity to get up the next day and say, okay, how do I make this the best that it can be, given the circumstances we have? But I'm willing to answer, ask questions right now. One, two, three.
Do you have any recommendations on what towns can do with these two buildings and how that costs and sort of the cost of the town?
So one of the questions was how the town can use the buildings that are going to be emptied. That is difficult, right? Because an empty building becomes an attractive nuisance, it can require physical improvements just to keep it whole. There are uses that could be in there. That's part of the reason, I think, to look at that sort of region-wide planning effort. Could any of those buildings be converted over to commercial uses, to community centers? I think about the, the New Braintree school is actually a really nice facility, right? That could be easily converted over to a senior center or a community center. Now, does the town have the means to then operate that is a fair question. But there have been creative reuses all over the country of school buildings, either for housing, for startups, for a lot of that stuff. We didn't go into that in a high level of detail, but there are potential uses. Thank you.
I was wondering if, as you've considered the cost savings, if you thought about the impact of students' school choosing out? And I don't want to sound confrontational, but I can tell you, there is no way that my kid is going to Hubbardston. I absolutely, like, I'll private school them before I have them take a bus to and from Hubbardston. It's just, for me, I just don't feel that it's reasonable. So I'm curious on the impact of the school choice out loss on the raw cost.
I would add the loss of the school choice in, because there are towns that surround Hubbardston that send a significant number of students in, and because they don't have options for busing, they are not going to drive their children all the way to Barry.
So if I could, so my question is, I get that Ruggles Lane is in Barry and it's a quote central location, but since we're a district, we're a regional school district, how come it wasn't considered to close Ruggles Lane and kind of divide where people are going based on where they live, location-wise, like they do in, like Worcester in cities, for example?
Especially considering that it's a lesser facility. It's an older building, it's...
Yes, the old building.
So let me try and get those. I see, I see other hands. Let me, let me try and get a couple of those. In terms of the impacts of parents choosing to choice out because of that, because of these changes, that's really difficult to quantify. I mean, we do have examples elsewhere of, you know, X percent, but we can't say that's what's exactly going to happen here.
I wonder if like a parent's survey could be done to kind of get, garner some of that data to work with as they make, as the decisions are made? That might be interesting data to work with.
So that's one of the benefits of having Tom. She suggested doing a survey of it, and I think that's something that we can talk as a group about how that could be done. But it's very difficult to project right now what's going to happen, and there have to be seats in the other districts as well for people to be willing to move. The Ruggles Lane scenarios, we did find that to be particularly efficient, but I'm willing to create another scenario, a multi-building scenario where Ruggles Lane is closed just for the exercise to do. We will do that between now and the next meeting, just to make sure that we have turned over everything that we possibly can, and I think that would be fair, so I'll do that for sure. Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. And on that, a lot of people school choice to Hubbardston here from the area of Hardwick. So maybe reduce your bus time to split it on the middle and go pre-directs and keep school choice from the populated areas around that. So that would be another reason why.
And, and, like I said, I'll do that in the scenario. One thing for any community that's accepting school choice in is the recognition that they're only coming in with $5,000 per student. So in a situation where you have buildings with empty seats that you know are going to have empty seats, getting those students in makes sense, right? You just want that seat to be filled. When you have a situation where you can occupy a good share of your buildings with the resident children, then there's a policy question then, how many choice students do we want to allow in? And how is it benefiting us then, right? Because once you're more efficient, then does another student make sense? Yes?
Along lines of benefit, remember, the school choice, you have the parents that are concerned about their children's education, so they're more paying attention to what's going on, you have the parent involved, the principal's, you have the test level.
Can I just say, that's one reason.
Yep.
That's one thing that happens. There are lots of reasons that people do choice. I mean, I was in a district that, two districts, or one district that did that. There were, we found there were lots of reasons that people did choice. You're right, that's one. Sometimes it was work and there are lots of other things. Can I, can I just say that I think, I think what's been offered here in terms, the other scenario is great, we should, we should run that. But I think, I think what's really going on here that's really terrific and very helpful is these are other pieces of sort of the decision-making process. So as we prepare these models and people here begin to discuss those with help and with facilitation to help with that, these are, these are other, other things in terms of where are our choice students going now? What is our philosophy going forward about choice? Because I think what every superintendent who's been involved in choice will say is that it's a heck of a way to run a budget, right? It's a heck of a thing to become dependent on, and quite frankly, what we're doing, I love what Andre Ravino in Pittsburgh says, is we're cannibalizing one another with this school choice program. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things going on there, and not all of them are good for your district, is my point. So that's, that's a decision-making piece of adding to, what do we add to these five, seven, 11 different scenarios as we look at them? What else do we need to know about each of them in order to make good decisions?
And if I could add, I think it would be a different fact pattern if a town wanted to actually join the region, right? to actually join the region, right? Or formally tuition in X numbers of students. Then there is more of a commitment, right? Right now, because school choice is family-based, parent-based, it can change widely. If a town somewhere nearby gets a brand-new elementary school, is everybody going to go to that school all of a sudden? So we should weave it in, but also weight it appropriately as the discussion goes forward. And a couple of hands. One, two, and then third.
For my previous question about what the best space is, and actually the question in the background, school choice. Did you consider the performance of the schools in deciding which ones to close? Because I've known from doing research that Ruggles Lane is performing above 31st percentile while Hubbardston is performing around 65th percentile. And if I had a choice between sending my kid to over-performing school versus an under-performing school, you're really about putting a lot of options on the table for me in terms of school choice, homeschooling, anything.
Well, having run this, this kind of exercise in another place, I guess I would challenge the notion of what is this school, right? That school that's called the same name as the school you're talking about right now isn't that school. It's made up of a different student body in a number of these situations. So we can go by past performance of the two populations that are being put into that school, but that's the best information we have as to, as to, as to what's going on there. And there are a lot of things that, there are a lot, I'd be careful with some of that because... Consider, consider what? So I don't accept those terms. Let me start there, of over-performing and under-performing. I don't accept the terms. So did we look at the testing and the results in the current school districts? I don't think we've considered that here, but that's an element that could easily be added.
Also, to my point about having that, the way the energy is diffused across five school buildings, the administration really should be in there going, "Why is this school performing better than that school? We have the same oversight, we have, you know, the same relative student body, so what interventions need to be put in to bring everybody up to the same?" So, yeah, and, and we looked at the building because the students also can move, right? So what is, a performance one year can be changing, but, but if, if the resources are not there, but could be brought to bear by being more efficient in how you're using the space, then you can start to really move those needles on those performances.
Yeah, no, that's the key, that, for me, and that's why I said I don't necessarily accept those terms. There are a lot of factors there. What kinds of services are available there? What kinds of supports are available there? And what we know is that in these scenarios, the answer to your question that we can provide is in these scenarios, we believe we've been able to help the district direct the right kinds of supports to those, to those schools to make them high-performing schools. Oh, you didn't? Oh, I thought you had. One, two, three. Okay, all right.
I appreciate all the wonderful things, but I question, we're making these changes and we've seen some trends now to talk about vocational, when you talk about education. It seems like the pendulum is swinging back to the traditional. We tend to be consolidating the schools and not looking at creative vision, moving into the next round of education. It seems like things are moving, or just passion for themselves. We're sitting at the forefront of where education is going.
I don't think so, and if, I'm sorry if you draw that. I mean, we've talked about a number of things here, and we've talked about, like IB is an example, like whether you could add some vocational programs. I'll use that instead of talking about comprehensive, what kinds of additional supports you would provide. I mean, I've seen some of your strategic planning work and sort of programmatic visioning. It all, it all fits with that. So that's going on at the same time as those things. So I, I don't, I don't think this is, I know this is not following the pendulum.
Well, not that it's following the pendulum, but I feel like more at the cost of education change. Okay, we have trends that everything is going down operationally. These are now not necessarily all just going to college. We see more kids going to community schools. We see more kids going in one, in vocational education. How do we intermingle that into a change now that we're going to education? To be on the forefront of education in this area, because we have a lot of resources in this area. I mean, if you were going to say, "I'm in New Braintree, so we have one small school." And you look at that school closing and then collaborating and creating things back to something, right, against the state police, brings in lots of communication and technology that they could change user a different type of education for the next one. So I don't know how much we've looked ahead in regards to this plan.
So I guess I would say that in terms of this planning, I believe we've looked ahead in terms of what we see as the trends that are going on both here and that, yeah, you're right. You know, we've been at this long enough that I know that we're always chasing that in one way or another, right? But we believe that given the best information that we have now, and your issues, and the trends that we're seeing in central and western Massachusetts, that these are viable options.
Could you talk to me a little bit about moving fifth and sixth graders to a middle school? So you talked about the cost-saving and the space-saving benefits of that, but where the research or the academic benefits of putting younger kids into a middle school program or a real school setting?
Right. So, well, let's see, without having numbers in front of me. Many middle schools are of a five-day configuration. In fact, I've seen probably four or five of them in the last year or two that are moving, they're adding fifth grade to a six through eight. It is, it is true that the most common configuration at the middle level is six through eight. Seven, eight, the National Middle School Association would tell you is their least favorite model because they believe middle schools need a grade that provides the glue, that is a grade in the middle. There's, in seven and eight, there's a group coming in, there's a group believing there's nobody that actually owns the place. So there, that's been their publishing for, for a number of years. There are, yes, there are a number of five-through-eight models around, and I know, as I said, of a couple that are, that are in the process of creating that model. You know, many, that, many of them, because of more parental concerns than their own sort of programmatic concerns, pay attention to the way that grouping happens, right? So many of them group five and six and seven and eight in terms of what, what they do. Many of them, you know, look at their, this was in the report earlier in the slides, it is in the report, many of them look at the type of program. So, you know, I'm not a favor, I'm, I'm not thrilled with the idea of the same sort of scheduling model approach for a fifth grader that I have for an eighth grader. Now, that may mean that my fifth grade is self-contained, and my sixth and seventh go to more degrees of what I'm going to do in eighth and then in the ninth grade. Could be that fifth and sixth are self-contained. Could be that sixth is a modified self-contained, meaning one teacher teaches the humanities, one teaches the, there are, there are as many different ways to do that as you want to have conversations about in your community, because I've seen it done everywhere.
Is there research in best practice on what, like, could we then look for what research says is best practice?
Yes, it exists, and, and you're still going to have, and much of it's going to say, "There are these options that are good practice," and you then have some decisions to make as a community.
In that model, are the fifth graders on the buses with the 12th graders?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a major problem. Because that would have to be, be on a bus.
It doesn't have to have.
It could be 19-year-old, 18-year-old. That's, that's super concerning.
So the one point I want to make is the buses are the least costly of pretty much anything that's in this recipe. So I would encourage a district that if it makes people feel more comfortable, you should get another bus to, to separate those, those grades out. There will be more people traveling, so that, that can be looked at, but the, the busing is not, not a very costly part of the equation. And if you're creative, I'm sure you can figure out a way to do that. One and two.
If we're a regional school district, why are we looking at moving New Braintree all the way to Hubbardston? Why not look at it as, "I live in Barry, but I'm in the middle of Ruggles Lane, Oakham, and Harvard." Why take a whole town to a whole other area?
Thank you, that's a really good point. That's a really good point. What we did was an academic exercise to figure out how to put students into seats in classrooms, in classroom sizes that make sense. There are ways that the district could then figure out how it wants to enroll the students. For example, there are some towns that allow school choice within your town, like Boston, for example, you can have school choice in three different regions of Boston because there are so many schools. So there, there could be ways, and it's complicated, and it's not going to affect our calculations because we just want to make sure there's enough chairs. But the district now can decide, do we want to allow the parents to select the elementary school? Or are you grandfathered in because the older child is there and you can do, or is the policy that you go to the closest physical school to your home, right? Is that how assignments are made into, into the schools?
Well, I think going forward, if you present it as New Braintree going to Hubbardston, you're going to be shot down by tons of people. So if you change it and you're saying that kids that live 10 miles from a school, whether it be Hardwick or Ruggles, they have that option.
So it's quite possible that what we need to add is, is just what Monica said, that this is an academic, I mean, let me add a couple of other ways that's, the, the district could do this in any number of ways. Let me give you two others. Some, some districts, when they've done this kind of exercise or actually implemented, have just done a population shift, and they've allowed parents to be grand, have their kids grandfathered in certain grades if they want. I did that in one district, and we found that more wanted to actually move to the other school than we thought, but it worked. Another approach, which, which we used in the last district I worked in, last K-12 district I worked in, was the concept of buffer zones, right? And that is that if you lived in certain areas, this was your elementary school, this was your elementary school. But if you lived in this area in between, you could be assigned or request both, either one of those schools. And, and that's how we, we achieved that balancing of enrollment. I was telling people earlier, our average class size was 21, and our range in, in a particular grade kindergarten was 19 to 22. Now, that's really tight. That's, that's, there were no 25s and 26s, right? And we achieved that through that. So there are lots of things you can do. As Monica said, all, all, all we were trying to do here, all the people were trying to do here, was to say, "Does this scenario work in terms of a number-of-seats approach?" Yeah, there are lots of things to shift in terms of the assumptions of who goes where from there.
I just wanted to know if you guys have considered, as you're doing your study with the seat filling, if you would consider the increased enrollment in preschool? So for example, you showed that Hubbardston has set up kids. Personally, my daughter goes to a private preschool in Westminster because it's actually closer for us than this is going to the public. So I would see a scenario where you may be close to doubling your preschool enrollment by making it more central.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. In one of our other projects, we actually contemplated moving the preschool to the high school, middle school building in order to offer vocational training in early childhood education. So we haven't really talked to the administration about that kind of concept, but I know Dr. Marshall is thinking about what would, what would an all-day preschool do? How would that affect the number? So that's a very good point. The preschool doesn't have to go to the two elementary schools. We could relocate it someplace as long as it met the licensure requirement.
And a lot as well for expansion.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you. One, one way in the back, I'll come back around. Yes.
I appreciate all the work that you guys have done, and it's probably not easy to stand in front of all these people and give these opinions. But I am concerned because the initial, during the initial part, how some of the data was inaccurate based on quantity of classes and how many teachers there are, if that was actually accurate. Are you using that data to determine how many classrooms would be open and size numbers? Because if that's not accurate, it really makes me question all these numbers here.
The table that you don't think is accurate is the one I created, so I will fix it. But the other data we used, we've had a really big collaboration with the staff, and the, those scenarios were, were run with the staff, and we were reviewing all the various options. So I'm, I'm confident in those, but I, you know, there's always a reason to go back and look at the data. But the, the various alternatives that we conveyed, literally, we have rooms and we have bodies, well, we literally have all of the individual numbers for each of the classrooms in these scenarios in a big spreadsheet.
So it's not the same? Okay.
It's not the same. I think I probably did a calculation.
Yeah.
I did something wrong with my formulas.
Okay. Can I, can I follow? I have another question about the population side and how the trend is expecting it to keep declining as far as the population goes. Why?
Massachusetts is getting older, fewer children in general. There are two separate sets of projections, one done by the Donahue Institute, looking at just residents age, and one done for the district, looking at enrollment, both of which are projecting a decline. And we can actually see it in the zero-to-five-year-olds is markedly lower than the 10-to-14-year-olds and the 15-to-19-year-olds. So we're seeing it. Doesn't mean that it is written in stone. There are some communities that have done a lot of outreach to try to get market to families, to try to get families to relocate, but there would need to be a lot of, of, of real collaboration to try to market the area to families. And there's, and it's in the report. I mean, there's a lot of amenities you have here that are attractive to families, especially ones that are getting forced out of the more urban areas because of house costs that are just astronomical.
And it's a legislative session that was held here, I don't remember when it was, maybe December, I mean, they, they distributed a number of handouts that show that this is, this is a, this is a rural and regional school district, western and central Massachusetts trend. Those districts are all experiencing to one degree or another those kinds of declines which are expected to continue for all the reasons of mine.
When we look at, like, the graphs of the data that you have, all the way back to 1850, I mean, the, the trend actually is, is stable in its variability, where it goes up.
Since 2000, it's gone stark down, very, very steep downtrend. And we can talk about that more, I want to, I, I love this kind of stuff, so I'll happily talk to aside about the nuances of the data. Yes. You in the purple, yes.
So my first question was about the previous slide and amending the school closure. So for any of this to happen, how, how does that actually occur? Like, does it have to be a town vote? Is that what? Okay. So if you guys have all these alternatives and every town says no, so what, what's going to happen at that point? So that's my first kind of question. So that, that's number one, since most people are not going to want to have a, a school closed in their town. And have you guys ever looked at alternatives of what other districts are doing for charging fees or charging? I know that Waukesha charges for kindergarten, they charge for busing, you know, there's other things that other districts are doing rather than closing a school. And then also, I know that there are other towns that have a K through eight. I didn't see that the closure of the middle school was even an option. Like, have you guys looked at, instead of putting fifth graders and 12th graders in the same area on the same bus, bringing seventh and eighth grade back to the individual towns where they have shorter rides?
So a lot of good questions in there. First, in terms of the closure process, it is written in the regional agreement that the towns have to vote after a series of public meetings and votes by the school committee. In our report, we talk about the concept of the tragedy of the commons, which is, really exemplifies the situation where there's a shared resource. And instead of sharing the resource, everybody says, "I want mine." They use, it's a cow's on a field, on the commons field. "I want mine, I'm going to put my cow there more often so that my cow gets more food," which ultimately just totally destroys a resource for everybody. We need to really face the reality here that if everybody says, "I'm not going to change," these things, this, "We're not changing, my school's not changing, nothing's changing," it is changing, right? Things are changing that are out of your control. Families are making locational decisions. Costs are going up. Special education costs are going up. Things are changing. You have an opportunity to make choices which are not ideal, not desirable, but to stem some of the problems that are going to, going to drive the district farther down what's now being called the, the death spiral of these schools, where fewer supports means more students with special education needs, means more expensive, which means you have to have more chi... with special education needs means more expensive, which means you have to have more cuts, which means there are fewer supports, and there's more kids who have higher needs, and there's more costs, and you just go down and down and down. And then people start leaving because the scores have gone down, because the students aren't getting the supports they need. So, there is an opportunity to stop this earlier in the death spiral. Some of the remedies that we've been working with are...
And yeah, let me, I think this was part of your question. And yes, we've actually done work in communities that have made a choice, have made these choices off of their report, and there are any number of other communities faced with similar kinds of situations that are at one phase or another in making these kind of choices about their school buildings and closing school buildings in order to gain control, I would say, back of those choices. Because that's the issue. There are changes happening, and right now, you don't have control of them for a litany of reasons. What we're suggesting is here are some number of ways to gain some control back to those. But we did not look at K-8?
I did.
Oh, you did, sorry.
I did. So, the concept of moving the seventh and eighth graders back, contemplated it, FPA but didn't put it in writing. So, first of all, this building has science lab space, it has music rooms, it has two gyms, a gym specially dedicated to the middle school. So, if you were to move the seventh and eighth graders back into the elementary school building, those amenities will no longer be available to them, one. Two, they will now be distributed as diffusely, if not more diffusely than the other grades. So, we won't have the benefits of having multiple eighth grades in one building so that we can offer cool computer classes or whatever other special things. And it will make this building even more empty, and theoretically, you could try to find something to fill that, but those seventh and eighth graders won't have that transition, the ability to have the kind of science and the amenities that are in this building today. So, I think that would put them in a definitely, in a worse position than they are in this building.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing else, I was in a district that had all K-8s. And I happen to be a big fan of K-8s. I will tell you, what we regularly heard from parents was exactly what Monica said about the seventh and eighth graders and their opportunity to interact with other seventh and eighth graders. Small seventh and eighth grades are very, very, very difficult to run, and they require pretty massive changes to buildings in order to provide the kind of science and other kind of programming you want to provide for those kids. Sorry.
And we will be back.
And we'll be back.
Yes.
I have a comment and then two quick questions. First, savings like our Ruggles Lane, how do you evaluate?
The two highest were that highest floor.
This is not, this is a million-dollar question.
Three.
So, that's about, that's, that's, yeah, four percent, I said, five percent savings that are particularly offset by these other, that's just, that, you know, in, in, in...
No. They would say, you want to say partially offset, I'll go back to our question. Yeah, not all, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there'd be some investment around something.
That's the task force. No, I don't have enough for everybody. It's the full report. Yeah, I will answer it. Last question. All good questions. The actual cost to close a school, we can talk to some folks we know, but we can try to get that information. The impacts on property values, in the thicker report, which will be online tomorrow, we have sort of an annotated bibliography of studies that have been done that looked at the impact of quality education on property values, that looked at various different things affecting property values in education. So, you can go through those with links to see, and I don't want to go into the whole science of it right now because we're at the end of the meeting, but it's a good topic. There's the bibliography of a whole bunch of studies that you can kind of look. No, but we have something we can talk to some folks about, okay? So, thank you all for coming. Two points of information, the next part two of this meeting will be next, Wednesday, May 10. There has been an email set up, if you can get a 10 or use your phone, it's called task So, if you're up late at night looking at the report and you have questions, shoot it over. Ideally, we would love to come prepared to answer a bunch of your questions, but we will answer it once in person as well. If you go to the homepage for the district, it should be up tomorrow.
So, the email, so that email address, that email your questions is actually up on the district's website now. You can find it there. Okay?
We will.